We're calling this morning's meeting to order. First thing is the approval of the agenda, and we do have an addendum.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the agenda with the addendum. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Citizens to be heard, do we have anybody on the...
We did not receive any this week.
Okay. Payment of the bills and vouchers, see the bills and vouchers?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay, we've got the minutes from April the 28th. We need approval on...
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Jim, second by Grant, to approve the minutes from April the 28th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Approved. Okay, the first thing, I think, we'll take the addendum, which is the... Approval of 3.2 liquor license for Barnesville.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. We received a call late on Friday with the COVID issues that have been happening. The Willow Creek Golf Course hadn't got received their information, hadn't got their application in for a renewed liquor license for next year, which is set to expire on Friday. So, we received the application yesterday and are requesting approval from this board.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by... Jenny, second by Kevin, to approve the liquor license for Barnesville. All for 3.2 liquor license. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, with that, we'll go into Kathy. Give us an update on the COVID-19. And I hope it's all good news today.
Always good news, isn't it?
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I handed out the numbers and I did put the cases of Clay County on the bottom, so hopefully that you can see the trends from the last four weeks. So, you look at the number of cases that we have. So, four weeks ago, we were at 69 cases. We're now at 246. Those that no longer need isolation, so those that have come up from the facilities that they were either ill or they've been isolated for the number of days required. And then the number of deaths, 17. Those, the majority of those, if not all, are from our long-term care facilities. So, you know, we continue to increase our cases, but the testing continues to increase, both on the North Dakota side and the Minnesota side. And then the other side I just listed, we gave you the cumulative Cass County cases. That's the darkened one, because those, that's important to note in our metro area, that those cases continue to rise. Cass County has 821 cases now, so they've got a significant increase in their cases. 1,518 statewide, so you see the majority of those are in Cass County. And they also have 27 deaths. So, based on the information as it's trending up, both in Cass County and Clay County has a number of facilities with quite a few cases. The North Dakota Governor requested that we have a Red River Valley COVID Task Force, so he invited Clay County Public Health to be a part of that, because we are part of that metro area. So, we have had a couple of meetings in looking at the... What we're, what the strategy is, is really looking at long-term care and assisted living facilities and how we're going to... How we're going to work out testing for all of the residents and the staff. So, that's what this task force is looking at right now. Now, we're still working with two states, so we're having to work out the logistics of that, but so some of the testing is going to be started on the North Dakota side, and it's going to be... The testing is like a point-in-time testing, so every time you do a test, it's just that specific date and time, whether the individual's positive or negative. And we certainly know that they can develop a positive test even a week later, so that just gives you a point-in-time testing. We're also looking at repeated testing at various intervals, depending on what's happening in those facilities. We would be also monitoring, are they using their personal protective equipment effectively? Are they, you know, providing the isolation and quarantine that's necessary? Are they doing the correct cleaning process? So, besides just the testing, we're looking at all of the aspects of what they're doing with these COVID cases. We also have a subgroup from this Red River Valley Task Force group, so we've developed a subgroup specifically for Minnesota. So, we have, we just had our first meeting yesterday, so it was Clay County Public Health, Minnesota Department of Health, North Dakota Department of Health, a member of the North Dakota Governor's Task Force person, and then Mayor Judd was on that first initial meeting yesterday. So, we are also looking at what are the strategies that Minnesota Department of Health has for the testing of our facilities in Clay County. And so, the Minnesota Department of Health has not operationalized their process and strategies yet, but it's, we're working on that, and that should be very soon, so we can address some of the needs for our long-term care facilities as far as getting them tested. So, residents and the staff, so that should happen very quickly. The Governors, both Minnesota and North Dakota, want this to be simultaneously. That's the most effective, of course. We can work at the same speed in getting all of this done on the North Dakota side and the Minnesota side. So, we're really entrenched in these groups to make that happen. Clay County Public Health is also on a third task force group, so we have a number of task force going on, and that discussion is again with MDH. It's a smaller group of counties. They've asked us to be one of those in looking at what is going on with our long-term care facilities, what has been our role in all of our counties, how can MDH serve that better? How can we work together? What changes do we need to make? And that just started yesterday. So, we're on a number of meetings and task force groups that will hopefully move us forward very quickly. So, any questions on those new groups that we're working on and...
Are you going to be focusing more on the long-term care facilities?
Right.
Is that going to be more of a focus by this committee or...
That's correct, especially the Red River Valley Task Force and the other ones too. Clearly, we need to make some headway in our long-term care, our assisted living, and our corporate care. Those are the vulnerable areas that are being affected pretty significantly.
The Cass and Clay statistics, are they pretty much the same as far as long-term care? I mean, is it about 80% either way or...
You know, I haven't studied the Cass County statistics, but their numbers are high also in facilities, and they really are the highest in the whole state of North Dakota. So, we really need to have a focused strategy on those facilities to make some headway in the spread.
So, what's holding up us is that we don't just go in and do that, or can't we just go do it, or do you have enough testing equipment to do it or...
Well, part of it was the testing equipment, part of it was to get who's going to provide the testing, and facilities can provide their own testing if they have the nurses that can do that. And then where do the test results go? And it's not just the testing piece, but all the education that goes along with it. And then when you test staff, you might find additional positive asymptomatic staff. So, how are you going to staff it when you have 10 people now that have to be removed from that workforce? So, they also have to have a plan for how are we going to staff it when we find all of these positive cases? And then if we have positive residents, do we have the space that we can put them in a quarantine section or isolation section? So, they have to have all of those logistics figured out, so it's not just simply to go in and do the testing. So, there's lots of planning that has to occur with that. So, we're wrapping up, and I see that this is going to be kind of at warp speed, so we're trying to stay step.
I hear in the news this morning that some, there's a few of them refusing to let them be tested. Is that an option, do you think? That some of the nursing homes or long-term care facilities will not allow them to come in to test?
You know, I haven't heard that specifically in our region, so I'm not sure.
I think heard the same in North Dakota, I think there was a couple of them in Minot or something.
Okay, could be. So, this, it just gives a, it gives a point in time for the first test, and then to determine, do we need to keep doing testing? Because it only gives that point in time, so how will the testing strategy be for repeated testing along the way? So, there's lots of work for the task force to do, but it's a good effort, and I think it'll, it's a good strategy to look at the vulnerable populations.
Okay.
So, and I'll have Cheryl and Jamie talk a little bit about the work that we're continuing to do.
So, first of all, Cheryl and I are going to talk about what we are doing to support long-term care and congregate settings, and it is what we're spending a lot of time on, but I do want to point out that we have over 20 providers serving, you know, thousands of individuals in our community, and they have been closely following the CDC and MDH guidelines from the very beginning. They've been doing staff training, they've been doing staff monitoring, they've been limiting visitors, so they've done a great job of supporting and protecting most of the residents that they serve. The challenges they have been faced with have been related to community spread, the fact that we now know that when a person, a person can be asymptomatic and still spreading that disease. So, that's what's giving them the challenge. And then the PPE shortage, and so those are things that they had no control over, but they have plans for how, once they had an ill person, they were going to separate them. So, they've really done an awesome job, and most of them have been very successful in protecting the citizens, so I really want to point that out. But also, because of those challenges, early on, our incident management team made it a priority that we need to do what we could to support them. So, we worked on identifying staff within our agency that have relationships with the long-term care facilities, and we asked them to do a daily reach out, which we kind of thought might be a little bit of harassment, but we found from the providers that it was not, that when you are so busy, that having someone reach out to you every day to say, "Hey, what's going on today, what can we help you with?" Has been, we've received a lot of support, so that's what our staff are doing, and it's been very effective in terms of giving them the support that they need. Cheryl's going to talk a little bit about how she's been visiting the long-term care liaisons that we've assigned to those positions and helping them to reach out and access the resources.
Good morning. So, as Jamie alluded to, we have a couple of nurses that are serving as liaisons with our long-term care facilities, congregate care, which means skilled nursing, assisted living, our corporate adult foster care homes, which is quite a large number of facilities in Clay County. And so, they are asking them the various questions through a survey that we developed early on about five or six weeks ago, and then I get those reports electronically, and they will also communicate with me or the facility itself, because I have built a relationship with some of the nurses in these facilities too, if they are experiencing more positive cases, that they are running low on the personal protective equipment, the PPE, and that I'm able to get that to them through the benefit of our Clay County Emergency Manager, Gabe Tweetin, and also through our West Central Healthcare Coalition, Sean Stowen, was able to provide us with a large number of PPE products that we have in our Clay County Emergency Preparedness Trailer on campus. So, that way, if I have a facility that calls later in the day, I have a key to get into that trailer, I can get them the supply that they need and get that to them. But along with just handing over the supplies, early on, start having the conversation of how they're using it properly, especially with adult corporate foster care. They don't always have to deal with these types of situations, where a skilled nursing home, they have many residents and to care for, so they're a little bit more in tune with the infection control piece of it. So, we're doing a lot of education with that, referring them to the MDH and the CDC website of how to basically put on the PPE and to take it off properly without cross-contaminating. We've also had to do the education piece of how to reuse some of these things, especially the face shields that can be wiped off, or even surgical masks. If, as long as they are not soiled, they can use them for an entire shift. So, there's been a lot of education that's gone into this, and I think it's only strengthened our relationships with all of those providers as well.
Good.
Any questions on anything with COVID?
Just have a question, kind of follow-up on the conversations that we continue to have in the press conferences. There's been a lot of conversation about counties that are frustrated in their lack of ability to either do contact tracing or help assist Minnesota Department of Health. And there's a pretty substantial article in Minnesota Public News about that as well. And so, as part of your subcommittees, are you continuing to voice that concern from the side of the state?
Yes, that's on an ongoing basis. We continually have daily meetings, so we are, we are in contact with the Minnesota Department of Health in their rollout of that contact tracing. Now, I have two individuals, Cheryl is one of them, that started the training. So, they offered a remote training initially, and it's just the first of a series of trainings. So, and that is a train the trainer. So, once Cheryl and the other individual has the complete training and the shadowing, then they can treat others. So, that's a good start, and that's kind of where we're at with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Kathy, the, you know, we've talked about the importance of contact tracing, I think if, but before we get to that, I'm going to, the testing that goes on, all the testing for residents of Clay County is now handled either through Sanford or Essentia. And it's my understanding that all test results for Sanford still have to go to the mail? Is that, is that correct?
Either they send them to mail, or they send them to their Sioux Falls lab.
So, anyway, they have to ship them out, and of course, then there's a delay, and you know, to me, that also can have an impact on how good contact tracing is. Because if you get a test and you don't know, you know, I'd like to see results in hours rather than days, that would make the contact tracing more effective. But I was talking to somebody, and I think Sanford is close to being able to do their own, have you heard anything about that?
I think they are close to that, providing some of that test results in their own lab.
Okay. Including the antibody one, which is also good to know.
Yes, both Sanford and Essentia are working on that antibody testing, and there will be criteria for that as well, so they'll develop. It won't be that initially that everyone can get them.
Okay. Well, keep doing your good work.
So, there, in response to your delays, there is, there is delays on the North Dakota side for the testing, there's also delays on the Minnesota side.
Right.
Heard from the North Dakota folks as well, there, you know, that delay of two to three days can be a little bit difficult.
You know, I think it's, you know, there's, the message to give out there are the importance of the testing, and of course, the more testing you have, the more positive results you're going to have, and so, you know, I think, I don't think people should panic over that, you know, when they see that, because it's just more people now being tested than before. But, you know, I think anything that we can do to encourage the ability to do rapid, rapid testing as well as rapid contact tracing, which we've already said we would even take over if we had to here in Clay County. And I, our board is ready to do that, you know. But the, that's only as good as how long it takes to get the results to do. By the time we get them, that individual who's asymptomatic might have been around 1,000 people.
Right. We wish all the testing was there, 90-minute or less testing. They have some of the testing that is very rapid, but again, for hospitalized patients or healthcare.
So, just one more question. So, the congregate care places are really hit harder in this area, and we talked about that before. We all, you know, you see, you know, in the Fargo-Moorhead area, there are, there are many places that have massive amount of people living under one roof, you know, so, and you don't see that happening there. So, that indicates to me that it has to do with the professional services going in.
Correct.
And I think you had talked about, right? And that's where it's being spread, and unfortunately, they have to have the care.
Correct. And of course, there's workers that work in possibly more than one facility.
Sure, yeah.
That work in part-time in some of our facilities here, that work in part-time maybe over the North Dakota, North Dakota's facilities, so they're aware that, you know, there's the crossover with workers and even with our healthcare workers. So, it's a challenge, especially with asymptomatics, they're not feeling, they're still wearing their personal protective equipment, but it's a challenge to keep those numbers down and not do the spread, so.
Oh, we need to have them, you have to have them.
Yeah, that's right. Kathy, do you have any idea how many tests in Clay County are happening on a daily basis?
I do not know how many tests are happening, fortunately, because of the majority of the testing being done in Fargo, so we don't get a breakdown of how many tests are being done.
So, I guess maybe my question could look at the Fargo-Moorhead region as a whole, though, but I would be curious to see, since we hear so much about increased testing, what the percentage of positive for the quantity of tests a week ago versus now is. It would be helpful as we weigh what opening looks like going forward to know that if it really is slowing down, you know, I saw over the weekend, our numbers did slow down a little bit. We're still seeing at least a death a day, which is really sad, but...
Right, and to determine the number of testing for Clay County is a challenge. Minnesota puts out the number of testing, but again, we know that most of our residents are testing over on the Fargo side, so it's a challenge to get those tweaked out just for Clay County testing, so. But I'll ask the questions on our next call about that.
Okay, anybody else got some questions? Okay.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Kathy, Jamie, thank you. Okay, next thing we'll take is our return-to-work policy that we've made up with the PIC Committee and stuff like that. Steve, you taking that by yourself, or is Darren?
I can, I can. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Hopefully, it's Corona-proof.
Some people just use a mask, but you bring the whole thing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As you guys are aware, the last three weeks, our Personal Issues Committee, along with Gabe Tweetin, our Emerging Manager, and Public Health Director Kathy McKay and her team, have been looking at what it may look like to return safely to work once Governor Walz has not extended the stay-at-home order, which is currently set to expire on the 18th. And document before you, we've prepared it looking at the guidelines of OSHA, Minnesota Statute 2019, Chapter 182, the COVID Preparedness Plan set forth by Minnesota DED, and also direction and guidelines from MDH and CDC. We would be looking to, that, put this policy in play once the Governor is ordered through executive order, or has not extended the stay-at-home order, or by other directives. And we were really looking at this as a working policy rather than a, one that will be rock solid. And so, again, what we're, we were looking at when we met is trying to establish a policy that put places a high importance on looking at the health and well-being of our employees and our citizens as we move forward. And so, I'm just going to touch on some highlights, and then if you have some specific questions after that, I certainly would be open to answer those. When we look at our highlights, what we would be recommending is initially, we would go in, we would go to an appointment-only situation. Our employees would continue to encourage our citizens to use other options, whether it's online services, the drop boxes, telephone, things like that. In the event that those can't be done, we would be opening up for face-to-face meetings. We've established a setup on our county webpage where in addition to calling in, citizens will have the ability to request meeting and meeting times with the different departments that, so they can do that outside of their, outside of their workdays. We're going to continue to encourage our employees who can work from home to work remotely, and we will continue to allow flexible schedules, altering work, with the understanding that department heads and supervisors would be responsible to make sure that we had adequate staff to meet the appointment needs of our citizens. The campus will continue to receive ongoing sanitation multiple times throughout the day, and we have hand sanitizers in multiple areas throughout each floor of our buildings. We would look for motor vehicle to return to the policy that we had prior to closing in that they, we would limit the use of the waiting rooms. Citizens would step, check in with our staff and then wait, wait in their cars until their number is called. We've also put up Plexiglas in each of the areas, each of the kiosks inside the building. The family service center and courthouse would continue to be locked initially. Citizens would, we would have updated signs with call numbers and appointment for their appointments. Once called, employees would be escorted both to and from their appointment by employees, and we also will have court security assisting citizens here. We do have a number of renters over in the family service center, and Georgia's been working with them, and they are in favor of the policy that is being presented this morning. County personnel will continue to work with court administration. The courts have been looking to open up some additional hearings, but have not, are not going to have jury trials, at least until June, and so, we'll continue to work with them to make sure that the rights of our citizens are being, are being met. We are requesting that our employees and our citizens, they're encouraged to, encouraged to wear masks when conducting business here at the county. We are not requiring that, but strongly encouraging. We also utilize signage throughout, throughout our buildings to educate our citizens and in staff, and we will also see different things in addition to different social distancing, things on the floor, reminding people to make sure that they're staying six feet apart from our, from each other. Another layer of protection is our sneeze guards. The sneeze guards have already been handed out to many of the areas where we'll be conducting points of business, and so, if there's, from our department head's standpoint, if there's additional sneeze guards that you need, we will be able to get those to you. Once, once this policy would be approved, again, we would be providing each employee here a copy of the policy, and so, they were clear on the, on the policy. And again, the understanding is the PIC would continue to, to look at this policy and evaluate it each week as changes happen, and we would look to, I guess, adjust that policy until we are fully open or we reach whatever our new level of normal is going to be. So, with that, I would be open for any questions.
Frank, we, this was the issue we dealt with last week at the PIC meeting, and we spent a lot of time on it, and I want to commend Kathy and Steve and Brian and Darren and Gabe, everybody that worked so hard on it, and it's kind of a living document, so like Steve said, we'll continue to work on it and adjust it as needed, but you know, the emphasis was on keeping the employees safe. But, you know, the emphasis was on keeping the employees safe and keeping the public safe that does business here in Clay County. And hopefully, we'll accomplish that when we put this into effect, so.
How does this address? I see that we got an error if an employee feels sick immediately or something like that, that they need to contact their supervisor and go home. But how about, how about a case where somebody is contacted regarding contact, contact tracing?
Sure.
And they, how are we going to handle that? Are we going to encourage them to work from home as well?
Yes, we would. We would.
And obviously, we can, we can have a policy for all of, on what all of our employees should or should not do. But what about in the family service center where we have tenants? What's going to happen if they, you know, are they following our policy, or?
We have, Georgia has spoken to, my understanding is if not all, most of the, most of the tenants, from all the reports to this point, they were all pleased with, with having the system set up. They felt their employees were much safer than if we had people just randomly walking through the facility. And so, they were, they were, they were pleased with, with this policy.
You know, I don't, I don't know that there's, you know, because they're, they're not ours, I don't know that there's anything that we can suggest they have to do, but.
Sure.
Or we can suggest it, but I don't know how you could enforce anything like that. And my concern is, you know, for the safety of all of our county employees and other public going in there, that the same process should be for everybody who works in that building.
Yes.
Is what I'm getting at.
Yep, and that, that's our goal, and Georgia does an excellent job with open communication with all of the different departments. And so, you know, I feel comfortable and confident that based on those discussions that they're willing to follow, follow this.
Thank you.
I am continuing to have employees reach out to me with concerns that there's just a lot of gray area in terms of what they're being told if with spread or opening and whatever. My hope is that this will help clear up some of that confusion. But do we have a rock-solid plan? And can someone in the department test positive? What is our protocol?
Well, we do. Kathy, you know, we have, Kathy and her staff have a, have a protocol, and we can certainly include that as part of, as a part of this for that procedure, so people understand. You know, I think we certainly encourage our, our employees. I think, you know, I know they're busy during the day, but I know that we break out Kathy's, Kathy's information each week from this board meeting. I certainly would encourage them, because I think, I think that she does a good job of explaining a lot of that. But I certainly, but certainly, we could add, add this to, to our policy.
I just think yesterday's information is old today, and so the more that we can relay information to our staff, the better. But also, even this morning, there was a resident coming to meet with, with someone in the department that didn't know that they weren't allowing people into the courthouse. And so, I think we need to continue to get the information out to citizens so they know what's going on.
Sure.
Thank you. In response to that, we send out information all the time. It's out on the website, it's all out on Facebook. We're sending information out at least twice a week and then to all the employees, so they're getting all kinds of information. We also have, when you asked about very specific questions, we have a return-to-work form that is very specific about if you're not sick, if you're sick, if you have close contacts. We follow that very closely from the Minnesota Department of Health. So, that one is very clear. We also have in the, I think we have it still in the plan is if there's questions in regards to someone that was quarantined or isolated, that they would, because we don't get the information from the contact tracers, I don't get that directly from, to local public health. So, I would just have a conversation with the individual that was either isolated or quarantined, just to follow up, to make sure that all of the procedures were followed, that they stayed home for the amount of time that they, they were required to stay home and to ensure that they're still not having symptoms. So, we have a kind of a double check for those employees coming back. So, we have some pretty solid, clear plans for that.
And Steve, going back to you, knowing if that were to happen, and we do have a process in place for the majority of these people are able to continue some sort of work while quarantined.
That's true. It is, if they are feeling well enough while they're at home, if they're sick with COVID.
Right.
Or if they're, or if they're quarantined due to other issues, we have a remote policy which allows a significant number of our employees to be able to work from home also.
Any further discussion? Matt, I'll be looking for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the policy of return-to-work, return-to-work policy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You want to go to the hearing, or you want?
I think so. No, let's go to the hearing.
We'll take item number five, the public hearing. Matt, the, this hearing is a petition for text amendment to County Development Code to allow precast concrete manufacturing as a conditional use in Ag Channel, Ag Service Center, and Highway Commercial zoning districts. Matt?
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just want to dial in on the phone here, just for any members of the public, want to comment?
Okay.
See if I can figure out how to do this.
Mr. Chair, while he is doing it, I move that we open the hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we've got a motion by Kevin, second by Channing, to open the hearing on the precast. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. Please enter a conference ID, followed by town. After the tone, please record your name and then press town. You are now joining the meeting. Is now joined. You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Hey, Matt, I thought you guys.
Yes, this is us. Can you hear me, Anna?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm going to mute.
You've been muted.
All right, thanks for bearing with me there.
Thanks for doing that, though. I think it's great that the opportunity is available.
Yeah, absolutely. And it worked really well for our Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission meetings, so. All right, so at the, I should say, correction on your, the first page of your information, see, at the April 21st Planning Commission meeting, a request was heard from Spring Prairie, Putter and Brethren to create a new conditional use to allow for a precast concrete plant in the Agricultural General, Agricultural Service Center, and Highway Commercial zoning districts. So, the information provided to the Planning Commissioner, or Planning Commission is included in this packet. I think I have to unmute. We've got YouTube and Facebook.
Yeah.
All this stuff, so.
We're going to have a lot more IT people after this.
Right. So, after taking that testimony before and again, there's considerable discussion and deliberation, and the Planning Commission made a motion, six to, six in favor, one abstained, and one against, to recommend to you as a board the approval of this text amendment. The one dissenting vote just stated that, well, he was in favor of this request for the Agricultural Service Center and the Highway Commercial zoning districts. Was, needed, thought we needed a little more study and consideration, deliberation for the Agricultural General zoning district, as that's roughly 90% of the county. So, what I will do is.
I guess we go for, now, when you say for 90% of the county, I guess that was one of my questions after I was reading this. Is this going to apply to the whole county then, or is this just for the particular area?
So, because this is a text amendment to the code, it's essentially allowing a conditional use in those three zoning districts. So, this is a county-wide thing, a county-wide amendment to the ordinance. It doesn't relate specifically to a specific place in the county beyond those three, three zoning districts.
So, anybody that has ag and those three.
Yep, yep.
That precast would be allowed?
Yes, as a conditional use.
It would have to go through the public hearing process, though.
Yes, it would have to go through the Planning Commission, through the, through that public hearing process.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to get a little bit of an understanding of what we're.
Yep, and I think that that's a really important point, is that this is really, I guess, not bound by geography so much in that we're not talking about a specific site or a specific place. This isn't a permit, it's a, it's a text amendment to the, to the code, and it's, it's county-wide, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And so, it's also important for the public to note that the person bringing, the entity bringing forward this, there's, there's still many steps in the process, and so this is just the first step in that process.
Yep, yep, and any other entity that would want to propose a project like this would also have additional steps to go through as well.
I have a question. What happens if they build a facility like this and then come to us afterwards for the permit?
Well, a facility of this size, quite frankly, I scratch my head to figure out how it could ever be built without anyone noticing it. That's a real head-scratcher for me. So, my assumption is that it's, precast concrete facilities are quite large. There's a lot of activity around them. And, you know, there's enough people out about in the county that someone should make a call into the county to let us know, or it's something that we should see. Obviously, past history has not, that's not been proven to be the case, but for me, I just can't understand how something like this would slip by. It's, it's not like someone's putting up a shed in their backyard and then asking for forgiveness rather than permission. Just the scope and the scale of it is so much larger, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
How about, how about the areas in the county where we have overlay districts? How would this?
They would, it would not be permitted as a conditional use in those areas where there's overlay districts.
Okay, so the overlay district would supersede?
Yep, the overlay district is always more restrictive, so.
Unless, unless it wasn't contrary to the rules of the overlay district?
Yes, yep, yep, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, if you would like, I can go through kind of the staff report that we went through at the Planning Commission, just to kind of give you all sense of what was discussed and all the information related to this.
I think that would be important for anybody that's listening.
Sure. So, and that staff report is, begins on page eight of your packets there. So, I think before we go into details about this, I'd like to just give an overview of the three zoning districts in question that this conditional use could potentially be allowed in. The first is our most prevalent zoning district, it's the Agricultural General zoning district. It's really meant as a, a way to support the long-term protection of agriculture in Clay County. And there's different policies in place that do that. So, so in our ordinance, I'll just back up a little bit. In our ordinance, we have our County Comprehensive Plan, which kind of gives a vision and goals for what citizens and county leadership and people who live and work in Clay County want the county to look like, what they want it to be. The ordinance is the tool that basically implements the comprehensive plan. So, it is the way that the, the goals and the visions of Clay County are, I guess, followed or developed. And so, this agricultural zoning district is going on that goal of preserving the agricultural character of the county. So, the next one is the, the next zoning district is the Agricultural Service Center. And those are examples of towns like Baker, Downer, Rollock. They're unincorporated communities in the county. They're really, this zoning district is meant to plan for that orderly, efficient growth of commercial and industrial development in the county, kind of getting that into clusters where there's already been some development. With those unincorporated communities, a lot of the emphasis in this zoning district is on businesses that are related to agriculture. So, the next one is Highway Commercial. And Highway Commercial is one of our, I think, less prevalent zoning districts in the county. There's a few spots here and there where, that are zoned Highway Commercial. Really, a lot of them are located outside of our incorporated communities, like Holly, for example, has a Highway Commercial District. There are some that are out to the county as well. But really, the, the goal of the Highway Commercial zoning district is to establish that comprehensive growth management strategy for the county to promote some orderly, efficient growth of residential, commercial, and industrial development, while at the same time preserving the rural character of the county. So, by kind of making zoning, a zoning district where commercial and industrial use could be promoted and, and allowed in the county, in order to preserve the agricultural character of the rest, while still encouraging economic development as well. Any questions on the three zoning districts at all, and how they might relate to the comprehensive plan? Okay, all right. So, I'll just go through a brief staff review of the petition for the text amendment to the, to the code. So, Spring Prairie, Putter and Brethren, through their attorney, Tammy Norgard, submitted a petition to add this commercial industrial use to our county code. The applicant currently operates a precast concrete facility in Spring Prairie Township. That property is zoned Agricultural General. As such, the facility is not compliant with the Clay County Development Code, because this is not an allowable use in any district in the county. So, just a little history on that site. This is just to provide a little bit of, I guess, as an example to the proposed text amendment. So, just to keep in mind that you're considering a text amendment to, to the county code. And even though I'm talking about that, this specific site, it's just to provide a little bit of context and example, so. So, in 2005, there was a building permit for an agricultural shop that is, that is currently on the footprint of the precast facility. And you can see that. Sorry, these page numbers don't show up as well. It's on page 12, you can kind of see where that is located. So, this facility or this shop, agricultural shop, this. So this facility or this shop, agricultural shop, was constructed sometime between two thousand and six and seven, and then there was a building permit for a fifty-six thousand square foot expansion to the facility in August of two thousand and sixteen, and that was completed in two thousand and seventeen. So kind of what spurred the, this petition for a text to the code was that the applicant submitted a building permit for a thirteen thousand square foot addition to the existing facility. Because that current facility is not compliant, I would, as the zoning administrator, have to deny that permit, because it's basically a non-conforming use, non-compliant use. It exists on the landscape, it can't be expanded at all unless it's properly permitted. So as Commissioner Mojo alluded to, this is kind of one of the first steps in doing that. If this is approved, they would still have to go through and get a conditional use permit from the planning commission as well as a, as a building permit. It's possible that some additional environmental review may be needed before they were to do any expansion on the site, and additional permits from the state as well. So I guess one of the main things that the planning commission talked about is one of the difficulties with this approval of the text amendment is that industrial manufacturing, if you read our county comprehensive plan and our code, seems to be incompatible with the goals of, of the plan for the agricultural general district in particular. However, this is, there's a facility that's already established on the landscape, it's been there since, you know, fifteen years now. And so if that text amendment is approved and a conditional use permit is approved, there can be conditions put on that facility that could minimize some of the existing land use conflicts that are happening out there with regards to light, noise, dust, traffic, pressure on township roads and county roads, as well as public safety, too, so. So the planning commission, again, made a recommendation to approve this text amendment. The applicant's attorney submitted a draft ordinance, and that's on page twenty-six, twenty-eight. Based on planning commission discussion, I have made some, I guess, modifications or some edits to their draft ordinance, and that's in, the most recent one is in, is what I handed out to you this morning.
Just to clarify, the draft ordinance that Attorney Norgard was on page twenty-two.
Oh, page twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Not twenty-
Yes, you're right.
Twenty-six is the one-
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep, page twenty-two, yep.
And then what you had on page twenty-six is slightly modified in what you handed over here?
Yes, this is the most recent change of that.
I'm just trying to follow along here.
I guess I have a different copy of what he did, twenty-six, two, is it?
I have twenty-two and then twenty-six.
Okay, go ahead.
Twenty-two is-
I'm following, doesn't make any difference, I'm following, just having, I got it.
Yeah, I think the one, twenty-two is the one proposed by the applicant. Don't worry about the one on page twenty-six, this is the one that is with the staff recommended And that's based on the discussion that we had at the planning commission.
So this is the one that is recommended by the planning commission?
And staff.
And staff.
Matt, I have a question.
Yes.
Is, is the road that services this currently a ten-ton asphalt road?
No, timber route roads.
Okay.
Yep.
So how would that work with this ordinance?
So with this ordinance, the way that it's, the standards is, it says, "In the agricultural general zoning district, precast concrete plants established after the adoption of this ordinance."
Ah, so it's not required for them to have a ten-ton asphalt road at this time?
No.
Okay.
But any new facility?
Including any additional requests by that particular site to expand would then trigger, would it?
It certainly could.
Well, wouldn't, 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 wouldn't that require a new, a new application?
It would require a, so if they were able to get their current facility conditionally approved, an expansion to that facility would just require a building permit.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the process.
Then that would come in under, under that regulation, then?
For an expansion?
Yes.
I guess that would, that would, that would depend on what, I guess, our definition of newly established is, is if it's, if it's something that's new or if it's expanded, if it's existed prior to the adoption of this, but then they want to expand it, I don't really know if it, if it should trigger the standard or not. It certainly could, it probably was a good idea. And I guess the, the major difference is, if it's something that's already there and they're just expanding versus a whole new facility. So the way that I read this, I read this as a whole new facility, that could certainly be changed.
One question I've got is that the original ordinance that Tammy wrote up showed five hundred feet for a setback?
Yep.
And then the one we got said a thousand feet, and I was here this morning-
Half mile.
It's a half mile.
Yeah.
And what's the purpose of a half mile going down?
So that's just based on conversations that I have had with citizens who live near the current plans. They're over, they're about a half, the closest one's about a half mile away, I would say, and that would, I would, based on my discussions and just experience being out there, would be the absolute minimum for minimizing any sort of land use conflicts with noise, light, and dust, all of that stuff. If you were a resident living out in Clay County and someone proposed building a precast facility a thousand or five hundred feet from your property, it's pretty close.
What if you build in town? Let's just take Holly.
Yeah.
What if you build a precast right in Holly? Wouldn't it, you're coming in that half mile, and there are quite a few people?
In town, I'm sure it's possible in town, but that wouldn't fall under this, this ordinance, fall under the city Holly's zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to, a follow-up to Commissioner Haney's question on it. Where my concern is, is for, you know, in a, in a new applicant, someplace in, in one of these three designated categories would apply, and then through the conditional use process, were able to monitor or be able to address the concerns of our both county and township roads?
Yep.
I don't see where that protection would be afforded here, you know, and again, I know the language is in general, and not necessarily tied to this one particular parcel. But if, if this particular parcel were to request additional area to expand, we're not, you know, we're probably not dealing with Tonka Toys here.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and so what, what protections would we have for the area we would ultimately be responsible for, and that is our, our roads?
Yeah.
You know, because that's, that's ultimately, and I don't know, maybe, maybe Tammy can address that if she wants to, but, but that's, that's the only real question that I have on here that I don't know. You know, if, if that, if that can still be addressed in a future public hearing and application, that's fine, but you just got done saying that you didn't think they'd even have to come back and apply, that they'd just be granted a building permit?
They would have to get a conditional use permit. If their facility had a conditional use permit, then they would just need a building permit. If it didn't have a conditional use permit, then they would need to get it, apply for a conditional use permit. One of the conditions of that permit could be you have to have direct access to-
But typically, when an original conditional use permit is established, a lot of it can, can dictate just how big something can grow.
Yes, yep, yep.
And that's, that's, that's where my concern is here, that I don't, I'd hate for this county to end up seeing, you know, three or four years down the road where something was allowed and we've got, and they're just beating the heck out of our roads and we've got-
Yep.
You know, no way to deal with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I definitely hear that concern, and our county engineer echoes that concern and shares that concern as well. So that's, I guess, one way to maybe address that would be to just strike the precast concrete plants established after the adoption of this ordinance, just strike that from, from this. And just say all precast plants, no matter when they were established, would have to have direct access to a ten-ton asphalt road. That would be, I guess, my, my suggestion or recommendation for addressing that.
I want to hear what others think here. It's a concern that I think we need to, ultimately, we could, we could be left holding the bag for fixing.
Yeah, yeah, because right now, that the current facility is accessed by two township roads, and those two township roads take a beating.
Just playing devil's advocate a little bit, and I completely understand, I've been in those planning commission meetings and we're talking about, but a truck loaded with precast panels versus concrete trucks, gravel trucks going through our county that don't have direct access to a ten-ton road, I think it's a dangerous precedent to write in here that it should apply to one, one area of commerce but not others. But I agree, I think going forward, you can address that through the planning, the planning commission piece.
I-
And I also, I'm concerned, there's another, I don't know if they do precasts, but in Holly, south of Highway Ten, would that change, I mean, they're in existence, would that change the road access that they have? I'm not sure, but.
I don't think it would.
My, my concern that I raised has, had, has to do with how big they develop, and then the bigger you develop, there's that many more of these heavy trucks, and are they, are they going around on gravel roads? You know, I, that's, that's an issue, you know, are they going to beat up those roads so bad? You know, we also hear farmers talking about how poor road conditions can be where it's difficult for them to get around, you know, so it's, it works both ways, but I don't know that I have the answer, but it's a concern, and I, I'm looking for solutions to that.
And the other thing is, will the taxpayers of Clay County be on the hook to build that ten-ton asphalt road?
Well, right now in Clay County, when we, we don't special assess for any roads that we build-
Then they would be.
Are these township roads that are going, aren't they township roads that are going-
These two are, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not the county? I mean, could the township even afford to do anything like that?
I've also been in planning commission meetings, though, with, when the colony has come asking for, for areas, and citizens have said that they've been concerned where the road standard is, and Cornelius has been open to talking to our county engineer about where improvements could be and how they could partner, and so I think it's important that, that that's, that step has already been made, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, so this is the current site, this is Hundred Seventieth and Seventieth Avenue. I think my-
Highway Ten's down below, right?
Yep, so Hundred Seventieth turns into Eighty-Six, which is paved-
Yeah.
So, right now, my understanding is, that the majority of the current traffic, and it has always been this way, but the majority of it is currently going up an existing haul road up to Twenty-Six right now, as opposed to using Seventieth and Hundred Seventieth. And in the past, those two roads were used more often. The applicant has worked with the township to figure out a way to take the pressure off those, those roads. And so that's the, that's what they've come up with right now. I don't know if it's a long-term solution or a permanent solution, but it seems to be, from my understanding, from talking to township officials, seems to be working in Spring Prairie Township.
Was there any concern through the public hearing process on the part of the townships regarding the ability for that facility to expand without additional conditions?
There wasn't, but I do think that that is a concern.
Now, who determined that a ten-ton road is required? Is that, what's out there now?
So that was just based off the recommendation of the county engineer, Dave Olbrow.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so what's out there now? What's-
Dave's right there.
Dave, do you know?
You talk about the existing facility?
Yeah.
Just, in the summertime, those gravel roads are legally nine ton per axle. In the springtime, obviously, they're down to five.
I mean, I'm just looking at, boy, we, we could be limiting a lot of pla, I mean, I don't know how many people want to do a precast concrete, you know, but we're gonna, we could limit development here, that you got to be very particular where you're going to put one of those places. Yeah, obviously, any other questions? Okay, all right, we'll hear from the, if there's no other discussion with the commissioners, we'll go on to the applicant now, if she'd like to.
Thank you very much. The county board, I'm Tammy Norgard, I'm an attorney with the Vogel Law Firm in Fargo, and I was asked to assist with this. I, and this is Cornelius Whip, and he's the representative of the Spring Prairie Hitteren Brethren. And I will generally agree with what Matt has presented, I have some things to, to point out, but this came up because there was a building permit requested, thirteen thousand feet, and it was identified that they needed to be in compliance with the zoning, so we're looking at a text amendment, okay? And, and one thing that I just want, as a preliminary matter, I want to point out, that they, they didn't start out as a precast plant, because, you know, you've, you've said, well, what if they just build it and, you know, ask for permission later? Well, that's not what happened here. This is something that has evolved over time in a building that existed, and they started a new use, and, you know, and, and the issue with your ordinance is, you allow certain uses in your ordinances, but if it's not in there, if it's not a ready-mixed plant or an asphalt batch plant, if it's not specifically identified, it's prohibited. So that's why we're here, to say, here's a new use that can be a great use within this county, it can be huge economic development for you if you add a category. And so what I probably should have done is prayed it in the economic- And so I, what I probably should have done is prayed it in the economic development commissioners to tell you what's going on, you already know this, in terms of construction here locally. And I, I was asking Cornelius, well, tell me some of the, the things that, that would be created in this plant. And, and he said, a prime example is the law enforcement center. You know, you precast some of the walls, some of the flooring, some of the roofs. They did the Cheyenne parking ramp in West Fargo. Lots of precast panels that get put together for that. I mean, it, uh, another use that's huge is wind turbine foundations. And there was a plant in Grand Forks, it was this huge economic development opportunity, which is, has, uh, is no longer an exist- I mean, it's existing, but it's not, um, it shrunk significantly. So there's a huge opportunity. The other nearest precast plants are Minneapolis, Sioux Falls. Look at all the development we have here. Here's an opportunity to have manufacturing, or not manufacturing, industrial uses here that can develop something that's needed for Block Nine, for the new, um, parking ramp facility that's just north of Block Nine. And so there's a huge need. And, and what we're talking here, just to give you some scope of what a new facility would look like, because Cornelius has been talking about a new facility. And a new facility could take 800 acres. This isn't something that's going to be put up overnight and somebody's going to be asking for an after-the-fact permit. Nobody's going to put that kind of an investment into a facility and then just, well, maybe you'll comply with the zoning, maybe you won't, and ask for permission later. That's just not going to happen. This is something that takes a lot of effort. Cornelius is working with the economic development commissioners today to try to look at bringing this new use in. This would hire 400 new employees, be a huge boom to your tax base. This is something that's needed in this area and can be a great economic engine here in Clay County. And it's just, you know, it's, it's a planned use. If something like that happened, well, anything that's happening at the current location, you'd find that there's going to be a lot less pressure at the current location if there's a new facility that's being developed. And that's something that, um, I, we're excited to talk to you about, obviously not here. But what I want, for this purpose, this is just the text amendment, and I want to keep going back to that. There's lots of discussion about, well, what, you know, how ton, what ton road is that township road, and what are they doing? And, and I think that's all going to be relevant, but not necessarily for this hearing, they're all relevant concepts. But this hearing is just, do you want this kind of use? Do you want to add this use in the county? And I would hope that your answer is yes, you want to allow it in the county. Understanding that if Cornelius or somebody else says, we want to come in and put this plant in, in, in some location somewhere in the county, they're coming back to you, they're saying, we need a CUP, we need to follow the state rules if an EAW is required, or something like that. You know, they're gonna follow the rules, you're gonna get stormwater permit requirements, um, you're gonna have road requirements and restrictions. You're gonna go through all of that, through that next process, all those things will be looked at and considered. One of, one of the, um, so I just wanted to kind of give you the background. And it's not that, that, that the Spring Prairie group has been, you know, deceptive by any means. It started out as one use, it grew into something, it grew into something else. And now they're seeing, they're providing a lot of these precast panels to places in the cities. I mean, we're engineering this stuff and constructing it here and sending it elsewhere. That's what you want in this economy, to become not just somebody that's manufacturing something or making something locally, but becoming this hub where you've got employees and tax base here that you can sell elsewhere. I think that's great. And so, from a county perspective, one of the things I heard at the planning commission hearing was, well, it shouldn't, aren't, aren't counties clamoring for these opportunities to add businesses to their counties? You know, aren't they, isn't that the very concept of the EDC, saying, we're trying to get business locally? And so I, I would hope that, um, when you're looking at this, you're gonna understand that this is a great use, it's a great opportunity, and that this text amendment, the concept of the text amendment shouldn't, I don't think, be terribly controversial. You, you did hear that there was a six-to-one vote in favor at the planning commission, the one no vote. He was concerned with the comprehensive plan, saying, well, we have this ag, 90% of the county is in ag, and it should stay in ag until we revise the comprehensive plan, because that hasn't been done tw- for 20 years. And I would say if you're gonna be a progressive county, and if you're interested in economic development, but you're not gonna allow any new uses except for what was created in your, in your ordinance, and your, pursuant to your comprehensive plan 20 years ago, you're not gonna go anywhere, you're not gonna grow anything. And, and in this economy where things are constantly advancing, and there's progress, and there's new uses and new opportunities, I would hope that, you know, you wouldn't say, well, in order to add a new use, we have to totally redo our comprehensive plan and get a group of citizens together and go through that, you know, six-month, year-long process. I, I don't think that makes sense. You know, while I, I respect the opinion, I, I don't think that makes sense for a progressive county. I, I, you know, there was changes to the, the, the text amendment that I submitted. And the one thing that I would focus on is you want to be consistent throughout your ordinance, right? So, um, you know, Mr. J, I, this is the first that I've seen the amendments this morning, and so I was looking at them and I, and I saw, well, I, we had 500 feet, it went to 1,000 feet, and now a half mile just today. And that's based on conversations with neighbors out there. And again, this isn't about a specific facility, this is your county ordinance, what are you gonna require? Shouldn't you be consistent with what you require for CAFOs and cement plants and asphalt plants? And what, what do you usually have for a, a setback? Knowing that when somebody comes to you with a CUP, and you've handled all sorts of these hearings where somebody's coming in for a particular use and there's a particular neighbor that's affected, then you start looking at, what's the setback? Is that minim- is the setback you set in your ordinance sufficient? Or are there specific requirement, or situations because of the wind, or a lack of trees, or something like that, that causes something to be different in that situation? In which case, through the CUP process, you can change that, and you can add different standards. But I guess I would, I would caution you from almost like spot zoning, saying, well, we have these people that are opposed to this use, so we're gonna change this ordinance and make it hard to get. Or put a baseline in place that you think might apply in the existing scenario. But it doesn't make sense when somebody else is coming in saying, hey, I want to have this 800-acre parcel and add 400 jobs in this other location, and maybe there's going to be a glitch that it doesn't comply with your requirements. So I would caution you from taking a few conversations with the neighbors in the last few weeks and suddenly raising up your setbacks. I just think it would be smart to keep it consistent with what you do otherwise in your ordinance for any other use as a general matter. So I think, um, I would take issue with that, and I would encourage you not to adopt the full half-mile. Um, just in part, because I think it just, it looks like spot zoning to me, that it's like, but this is different from anything else that you've, you're doing in your, um, in your ordinance. Okay, so the whole section four, these standards adding that you have to have direct access to a 10-ton asphalt road, and the EAW is required, and this isn't redlined and underlined in my copy, but I'm just noting that this wasn't what I had included, this was added. And Mr. Jacobson said that it was recommended by the planning commission and staff. And I'll just suggest that I was in the planning commission meeting, and I don't, and maybe I'm not remembering it correctly. I don't remember them saying that, you know, their recommendation included specifically it must be on a 10-ton road, and it must require an EAW. So I guess maybe that's something that Mr. Jacobson could clarify, whether this is a staff recommendation or whether it was an official recommendation of staff, because I don't remember.
I know the recommendation came from Overbow, I was in that planning commission, so we talked about that prior. And then the EAW piece was brought up by the commissioner from Morehead, and he was concerned that that may be correct. That was his comment.
And I know they were discussed, but I don't remember that they were part of the six-to-one recommendation, is what I was just pointing out, that they were just suggestions, it might be staff recommendations for your consideration, but I don't think they were officially, these two requirements must be included to get our six-to-one vote, that's all I'm pointing out. With regard to those, I mean, I'd have the same suggestion as I'd have on the, the, um, setback issue. What do you usually require in your ordinances? You don't want to be adding something in here that you generally don't require. And, you know, you can deal with the road issue through a CUP. You do that all the time with the gravel haul roads. I mean, I've been here on other gravel mining issues, and you address the roads then, and in that situation, and with those particularly users, based on the road situations at the time, based on the input of the township at the time. And so I think it's a little bit concerning to add this requirement in your ordinance. So this is your baseline, nobody can locate here unless. Because the problem with that is, again, I'm thinking economic development, future development in your county, of some new facility. Okay, again, we're not talking about the existing facility or a complaint of the neighbor. We're talking about thinking, big picture, where a new facility will be. And if you make this too, you know, broad brush, somebody's coming into the area, wants to put up a precast plant, and they look at this and they say, well, we were limited to where we can even buy land. So with this, we can't even talk about it. And, and I, so I think that it might be better to address that in a CUP than have it in your actual zoning. I also think the environmental assessment worksheet requiring that, which was recommended by a dissenting planning commissioner, I think is dangerous. And here's why, I think that, that EAW, I'm, I assume that you're very familiar, you guys have gone through EAWs and EISs in the county. But, and there's entire Minnesota rules that are crafted, you know, with a DNR input, environmental specialist input. And there is a whole page of things that require a discretionary EAW, or a mandatory EAW, or a discretionary EIS, environmental impact statement, which is a two-year-long process, hundreds of thousands of dollars in investment to go through the environmental review to do an EIS. That's mandatory if you hit certain triggers. Triggers of size, triggers of intensity of use, different types of uses require them somewhere, discretionary and mandatory on EAW or EA- EIS. So there's like four different levels that get triggered. Okay, you're a county, and you have one planning commissioner that said, hey, we should require an EAW on something like this. Okay, I just look at that and think, aren't the experts the ones at the state that are putting the state rules together? Shouldn't be, they be the ones to say, you need to have an EAW, or you need to have an EIS? And I will tell you that the new plant that we're talking about that might happen with 800 acres, that is going to be an EIS. That is going to be a two-year process, as required by state rules. And so I'm, we're not trying to get out of anything, I'm just saying, from an attorney perspective who practices in the environmental area, I don't think the county wants, it's like the, the confined animal feeding operations where sometimes people are saying, well, we want to have so much thickness in the bottom of the lagoons, or we want to have these sidewalls for, for clay on lagoons or something. And, and what the, um, what the state has come back with is let the experts decide those things. You guys decide siting, you guys decide other things, but you don't decide the environmental considerations, because that's something that the state is in a position to regulate and review and dictate. So, um, with that, I, and I've talked to Mr. Jacobson when I saw that this morning, I just told him that I was gonna be, um, you know, suggesting that that not be part of this, because it's not that it won't be a part of this, it's that this body probably, I don't know that the county ordinance is the place to mandate an environmental assessment worksheet on that. And also, you don't do it, I think there's one other area in your ordinance that you've required an environmental assessment worksheet, just based on my conversations with Mr. Jacobson this morning. And it's opening a gravel pit in an area with some environmental considerations. And that's something that likely requires an EAW, otherwise under the state, but again, I just saw it this morning, so I haven't looked at it.
So, if I, can I,
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
In regards to number four, because number four goes to the part of the concern that I had regarding road issues. So the, um, road issues can be, or, or cautions or concerns can be addressed through a CPU. You agree with that, right?
Right, I do.
And, and I do agree with you, um, regarding, I, there's already regulations in place that triggers environmental, regardless of whether Clay County has it or not.
Right.
I, I think it has to depend on our planning commission to all, and our planning and zoning director to know what those are, too. Somehow that's got to get triggered to do that. The public can always bring it up. So, um, how about if number four wasn't even there?
Great, and that's what I'm saying, it wasn't in my version, I would suggest removing it entirely. Because I think those issues are, can be addressed by you in the CUP process, without having a requirement like this.
And so that would also then eliminate the language that precast concrete plants established after the adoption of this ordinance. That would take that language away.
Right.
And that, to me, would mean that anything going forward to this day could be subject to a conditional use permit.
Right.
Including, including, uh, any future consideration you may have to do things out there.
Yep.
Would still meet that requirement.
And that is the plan.
And I, then I think, you know, um, everybody's gonna be on the same playing field in, in terms of an application process. So maybe, maybe it is best, and, and maybe, can we get your, your thoughts on that? On number four?
Yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely fine. That was included, uh, the planning commission had basically asked for some standards to be in place for the agricultural general zone district. We don't, it's just a recommendation, it's not something that you have to do. I, I would say that that's fine, if you want to consider striking it. I do want to add one thing about the, the setback. I would argue that it is consistent with our ordinance in terms of, if you look at our, our setbacks for feedlots, quarter mile from a residence, half mile from a subdivision or incorporated community, those are, those are setbacks that are in place for, for feedlots, and there are, there's some part, I mean, larger operations in the county. So, I wouldn't say it's just based off, and I should have made my, that more clear in my presentation to you, that it's not just based off conversations with, with neighbors, it's based off of other setbacks that we have in our, in our ordinances.
One thing to consider with setbacks, setback from where? In the precast facility, you do have the building, the manufacturing side. The lay-down area is probably 75% the size, or, you know, 10 times the size of the building itself. So is the lay-down area part of the 1,000 feet? That means can I not just drive out and drop down a wall? And I, and I'm, in 500 feet of the neighbor, can I not just put a wall there, just for temporary sake, for loom tomorrow? I mean, I'm outside of the ordinance then. Or is the building itself 1,000 feet? So if I cannot, I mean, I really do not have to prepare a lay-down area. In our type of, in soil structure, just a plain farm field is enough solid to have a lay-down area. And all of a sudden, it's part of the precast facility, because I used it for a month, kind of ran out of room next to my building.
I would also point out that I think with the feedlot, usually the concern is odor. So distance is odor, and the quarter mile and half mile based on, is based on the number of animal units, and based on odor. Okay, we don't have that with this kind of a facility, this is more of a traffic issue, and, and, you know, I think Cornelius makes a really good point. If, and you're, what he's talking about is storage. So, storage.
This is significantly different.
Yeah, the best, the best area of the precast facility is storage.
Right. What did we do? We just did the solar, right? And so it can be viewed as, the lay-down area as a nuisance, just because of visually. But with the solar ordinance, how far did we, what's the setbacks?
100 feet from property lines.
From property lines, but what did we do from residence?
Actually, I don't think there is.
I thought we talked about.
I think it's just property lines. So.
I think that, that's a good point, Cornelius, and I think, is it the, is it the sound of the actual building? Is that, where would that setback be from?
So, my, this is just my experience, is that most of the building itself, I don't think is much of a nuisance at all. My understanding, and Cornelius knows better than me, is that precast manufacturing in a, in a facility is, environmentally, in terms of, of noise and, and dust and lightings in the building itself, it's not that substantial. I think most of the, the issues might actually come from the lay-down yard itself, and any noise and traffic and things like that. Dust created from driving cranes around and vehicles. That's, I think, where the, maybe the nuisance might come from. But in terms of inside the building itself, I don't really think, I mean, I've been out there, I've driven by it, I, well, throughout the day, you know, I've been out there several times, probably hundreds of times now. And you can't really hear anything coming from the building at all, so.
As far as the lay-down area noise, there's, there literally is no noise. I mean, everything's slow motion. I mean, it's a crane lifting, crane is as trawled down as possible. I mean, it's, everything is slow motion, trucks are in slow motion, of course, once you get out on the road, but that's the exit of the lay-down area, and then you're back on the road. I mean, there is none of exit everywhere. But as far as the lay-down area noise, there's literally no noise. I mean, there's cranes running around, but, I mean, have you ever heard a crane running? You don't hear a crane, the crane has no noise.
I guess I have a question, would you explain the term "lay-down area" for us?
A lay-down area, you manufacture, for example, you could say a 12-foot by 30-foot piece of slab concrete, and you carry it out and store it on-site. Does you, for the most part, the building in it itself, let's say, for example, in your case here, this is a Clay County jail right behind us, this is a typical precast building. Those walls were manufactured inside the building and carried out and stacked. Those walls were manufactured inside the building and carried out and stacked outside until the contractor on site here was ready to receive walls.
I see, okay.
Which could be, I mean, like.
Years?
Well, not years, but probably a month or two. So nevertheless, in the facility our size, you can have, well, we've got at least 40 acres that are solid full of concrete. Some will sit for four months, some two months, some only a month. But as far as dust, there really, everything is in very slow motion because it's just trucks loading, slowly driving out, I mean, they're not even, they're going to drive out of the lot untied with an untied load just to get the next one in. I mean, it is very slow motion until they're ready to leave. So there's really no noise, and as far as dust, there's very minimal dust because there's really not that much traveling going on.
And we'll also note that, it was mentioned by Mr. Jacobson, but I want to emphasize it, that after Mr. Overbow talked Cornelius about the road conditions, they haven't used those township roads for a year. They use.
We have not, we have decided this year during road discussion, we're not, not going to use any township road. So we're going to use that.
Hall Road.
Road. And even.
Up to 26 you're talking about?
Yeah, through the relative up to 26. So that means even, we've got dairy, we can, so even our milk trucks used it, all our products coming in, for the most part, used it, all our vendors. Not, not, UPS will not, there's no way of making them do it. But for the most part, like 95% of products go and products come and use that through the relative road. And I have to say, that road this year, those two township roads, we've never seen them as bad. I'm not sure what was going on, but we have never.
It's a bad year.
So, the time we've been on, we've never seen them as bad. They were practically impassable.
And that's where I think you're getting complaints about the road conditions and people are jumping to the conclusion that it's Spring Prairie's fault. And yet I just point that out because it is very relevant, because roads are a big consideration and, you know, topic of discussion, understandably, absolutely. What I hope you're hearing is that this applicant is willing to work with the county if there's a concern raised. They're saying, okay, how can we fix it? What can we do? And again, I don't think this is relevant for the text amendment that you're considering today, but I'm just underscoring because it's been raised, that you have an applicant that if and when they come forward with a conditional use permit application and the building permit for the expansion, that's the time where we'll talk about this and say, well, what can we do to satisfy the township, to satisfy Mr. Overbow, and to make sure that there's not an unnecessary financial impact on the citizens.
I have one more question now. We've referred several times to a future expansion area. Where's the location of the future expansion area?
That is a Highway 26, Highway 26 would be the access road. The proposed site currently does not have, there's a two-mile stretch that's needed for pave, but due to its location, that it has minimal prep area for us as far as laydown area versus any other site. The savings is so significant that we'll just pitch in and make a pave road.
So you're talking north of 26 up towards the B and B Ranch?
Just if you, if you're familiar with the wind towers.
I am.
That is the site.
Yes, okay. So, Mr.? And I have concerns about that area as well.
And that's something that we would, you know, if there's going to be a, a new use, it's something that if we have a text amendment and there's a conditional use permit to come forward with, absolutely, we would be discussing those. Any concerns?
I guess my big question is, this is zone for agricultural general right now, and this is obviously a manufacturing facility and a major one. Why is this not being cited in a place like an industrial park?
As far as in, in town or?
Well, we've got several communities in Clay County that have industrial parks. They have pipe in the ground already.
Yeah, a site like this needs, I mean, the cranes that are running around on that soil are up to 100, 110 ton.
Okay.
And there literally is no location in the farmland area without tens of millions of dollars of soil preparation to hold up to that load. The site that we're on outside, out there now, literally takes no preparation because it is solid ground underneath. A new site that we're proposing is the same situation. We've already taken soil samples on it, engineer has determined already, you literally need no preparation other than just spread ground, crush rock on it and you're set to go. We have looked at sites here in Moorhead and they require, for not even the same size that we're proposing, up to $20 million of site preparation. And then it will take constant maintenance just to hold up to the weight.
I think we're getting off the track a little bit here.
Mr. Chairman.
We tried to discuss on, you know, my comments, first of all, is, I was just listening to what you said at the beginning, you know, as far as the questions we asked, you know, it's not, the questions I asked and probably the rest of them too, is not whether we're for or against this thing. We just wanted to find out what, what it's all about. That's why we asked some of the questions we did, or anyway, for my part. And the next thing, I also said that you, we should go to the experts, you know, as far as that, that's our expert right there.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back and, and again, I think everything, my only concern center around item number four. And I would feel much more comfortable in supporting the change to the language without item number four at all, provided that, Matt, these are questions to you, then if item number four is not there, any facility who wants to do something that's related to precast work in any of those three zones would require a conditional use permit. And under that conditional use permit, the issues of 4A can be addressed, and actually 4B can be addressed through that process. So I agree with you, Tammy, that maybe this, that's kind of overkill here, and it would, it would take care of my concern regarding, you know, everything that is, plants established after the adoption of this, because then it's every precast plant would require that. And I, you know, I just, that's kind of where I'm going on.
Okay. Any further thinking you want to bring forward, Tammy?
You know, the only thing that I'll, I'll throw out there is about this, I would hate to have ambiguity in your statute. And so in looking at the setback, your setback says, you know, because we're talking about when Cornelius said from what, from a property line? And what your proposed ordinance says is any structures associated with a precast plant must be at least 1,000 feet, half mile or so from a residential structure on adjacent property. And so I guess the way I would read that is any structure, which would mean the building of the precast plant, needs to be 1,000 feet from the building of a residential structure on an adjacent property. But to the extent you think that determination of structure, and maybe I'd throw that to Matt or any of you, or Brian Melton in the back, if it's a, you know, if you're saying that, that storing concrete on a field or on a, you know, just piece of land is a structure, I don't think that that's a structure necessarily. Because you look at the definition of precast plant, we said any building, structure or land used primarily for storage of casted concrete and related products. So I, I don't think it's necessarily vague or ambiguous, but I just want to raise it to make sure you don't think it's vague or ambiguous, that what the setback is talking about is a structure, so the actual physical structure that would be built as a manufacturing plant has to be 1,000 feet away, 500 feet away, half mile away from a residential structure of a neighbor. So I just want to raise that to make sure that you don't see any ambiguity, whatever you decide to do with it.
I think that specifically could probably, I feel, would be addressed in the planning process, the hearing process at the commission level. Yeah, I agree, I think it's a product versus a structure.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
But you agree that it's a structure, the manufacturing building, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that's on the record somewhere so that later planning commissions, when they're looking at it, they're saying, wait a minute.
Are we saying there's a distinction between the structure and the laydown?
And a land.
And the panels that are laid down.
The use of land.
Storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think there is that distinction in the language.
Yes.
Is there anybody on the phone that wants to make a comment? Or have we got anybody or?
So Emma, do you have anyone on the phone?
Hi, this is, yep, we have about seven people on the line here. We actually have Bill Davis, the chair of our planning commission, on, so I would kind of offer up our first spot to him to see if he would like to make any comments. So Bill, if you press star six, you can unmute yourself if you have anything you want to mention.
Hello, Bill, are you there?
Um, star six, please unmute yourself if you have anything you want to mention.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hello, Bill, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
So if you have, if you have your YouTube feed on, you might want to turn that off because we're getting some feedback.
Okay, I got, I shut up. The, I think the lawyer's right, you shouldn't be picking out one industry and trying to add extra conditions to that industry. You should treat them all the same. There's a lot of discussion here, but just for the ordinance, I think, the lawyer has pretty much right on. Shouldn't you say, say them up? That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay. Emmy, got any else?
Um, yep, so if I could have Jim, if you would, if you have any comments and you'd like to unmute yourself, you are up next.
Who is it you got on the line next, Emma?
Hello?
Jim who?
Hi, Jim.
Yeah, Jim Greer.
Can you say your name?
Yeah, Jim Greer, G R I E R. And we're neighbors of the Heterics. And I submitted some written comments. I don't really have too much more aside from those, just a little bit of historical perspective. We moved into this area 47 years ago to be out in the country. If I'd wanted to be around a lot of people, you know, it would have been a lot cheaper and easier just to get a place in town. The Heterics came in, they've been really good neighbors, we're good friends with them. I know Cornelius, he and I get along well. Some of the issues are, it's just been one of those gradual things where they've been expanding and expanding. And it's kind of gotten up to a neighborhood, I don't know what you want to call it, limit of, the whole area is kind of dominated by the, by a major industrial complex now. Things have changed considerably. I guess my comments relate primarily to further expansion. I'm concerned about that. You know, I don't know how much farther it's going to go or where it's going to go. I've got really mixed feelings because on the one hand, I like the Heterics very well. On the other hand, I'm concerned about the size of the operation. So anyway, I've submitted written comments and I think that will be sufficient for now. Thank you.
Okay.
And just a reminder to folks, we are really only.
You have to talk into the box because there's not a microphone that's connected, so you have to talk right into that box for them to hear it.
Just a reminder to folks, what we're considering now is only this text amendment to allow this as a conditional use in the three zoning districts. If anyone were to apply for a conditional use permit, that's where a lot of these, these issues could be addressed as well during that, during that planning commission hearing.
Provided number four is gone.
Okay, Emma, take our next one?
All right, Lori, if you have anything you'd like to say, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six.
I pretty much agree with all, everything that Jim said. I also would like to say that.
Lori, could you identify yourself first?
Yep, Lori Schlossman. I'm a neighbor out here also. And I, I just kind of have a comment about the gal that was talking about her, not, not taking the concerns of the neighbors in as far as the setback. I don't know, I, like a structure, the 500 feet or half a mile, if they're talking structure, well, they keep expanding. Now there's the fuel station on the east side that keeps expanding, they keep building more onto that. And pretty soon, we're going to have the layout here, all the things sitting, how far are we going to have that in our front yard if there's not a set rule? So a half a mile, do you want all this stuff? And, you know, we don't want it all coming up to our front yard. And like Jim said, things just keep expanding and expanding. And our understanding was that things were supposed to be expanding to the west, but yet they keep coming further and further to the east. And I know that's probably not a part of it, but I think that all needs to be addressed along with the road conditions before all of this is approved. Once it's approved, I feel like it's too late. Everything is built and set and going and then, and then we're kind of stuck. Now, now we can't change anything. We can't set any restrictions or rules after it gets approved. So there's just a lot of concern out here, I think. But God forbid.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Emma, got someone else?
Yes, Ryan, if you would like to say something, you can unmute yourself with star six. Ryan, if you're there and you'd like to say something, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, Ryan. Would you identify yourself?
Thank you. My name's Ryan Oss, I live with the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation. Sorry to be there with you today in person, we're still adhering to some of the social distancing guidelines. But I did want to just make a few comments. Obviously, this is a, is a complex matter, there's a lot of factors and, and a lot of perspectives to consider, but I did want to just kind of highlight a couple of the economic development positions or points that I think might be helpful kind of in the continuing conversation as, as the continuing steps evolve. You know, we're focused at the UDC on primary sector economic development in Cass and Clay County, and so this project really fits in that primary sector model of companies that are adding value to a product or service and then selling that outside of the trade area. So obviously, there's, there's a national market for, for the product that, that Cornelius and his group are, are developing. That brings new wealth into, into the local economy. That does a lot of different things, obviously balances out the tax burden, you know, between residential and commercial. But really, more importantly, it brings that new wealth into the community. I think it's also important to highlight in terms of, you know, the diversity of education that a business like this brings to, to the local market. We've seen, yeah, economy take major hits recently, and so it's always important, I think, to be looking at economic diversification and how you can kind of balance out, you know, those, those major hits to economic sectors that, that obviously influence spending and sales tax and other things to the local economy. So just, just a few things to articulate there. And in terms of infrastructure, you know, we're committed to working with Cornelius and his team on this project and really any other projects as well that have a primary sector focus. And the state of Minnesota's got programs like the Greater Minnesota Business Development Infrastructure Grant Program, which can provide up to $2 million to match capital costs for public infrastructure to expand projects like this. So just wanted to highlight a couple of those things. I appreciate the time, I realize we're over time here, so I'll, I'll leave it at that, but just, just wanted to know in terms of the economic impacts, you know, we're, we're pretty keen on projects like this.
Hey, thank you, Ryan, and we too are concerned about economic development, so thanks for those comments. Emma, your next one?
Sorry, I had muted myself. Leon, if you are there and you have any comments, you can unmute yourself now by pressing star six.
Good morning, Commissioner Leon Schlossman. I live up just to the east of the discussion that we're having today. And I have no complaints as far as the neighbors and the operation that they're currently doing. My only comment is on zoning. When we start making changes to, to our zoning decisions under the premise of economic development, it's hard to put that back when we make mistakes. So I just rely on your judgment wisdom to do the right thing for the entire county and for the neighborhood and not just under the premise of one business, no matter where it is. I really do think that the Heteroid Colony and Cornelius is doing a, a good job in trying to accommodate as much as they can down there. And we'll address a lot of this in the CUP as far as some of our major concerns, if that time comes, if that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Emma, your next one?
Um, we have two residents that they both had noted that they didn't have any comments. But I would open it up to Jane or Laura if you do have any comments that you'd like to share. You're welcome to unmute yourself at this time.
Anyone there?
Seems like that might be everybody.
Okay, thank you, Emma.
Yep.
Can I raise one more point? And that's just following on what Ryan said from the Economic Development Commission. Just to underscore that he mentioned that there's $2 million in state grant funding available as a match for public infrastructure. So if there is a requirement that a road needs to be upgraded or something changed like that, that $2 million match can go towards a county road. That's my understanding. So I just wanted to say that there's extra funding out there available.
Thank you.
Two things I need clarification here. One, with as far as expansion, when we're talking the building that brought this all up here, I mean, not all buildings on a precast site is for manufacture. And the building, when we first proposed it as for a permit, it really was not even meant for any expansion. It was really, it was a finishing building, which does not, does not add to traffic, does not add to anything other than we want to bring a process that we're doing outside, we want to bring it inside. So we're, in that respect, we're really not adding any expansion when we're talking or an expansion building to our current facility. However, let us be with the expansion that we are proposing on the Highway 26 side, that has now been pushed out three years because it's under an EIS decide and which will take for 24 months and I, you can fear at least another year for developing. So that's been pushed out three years. Well, our business has already planned to use the new facility. But now that we learn it's three years out, this, this proposed building that we want to use for finishing will be a temporary expansion, you might say. And either it's, it's in that building or we're just going to go outside. So now, the next question is, when we're talking expansion, I mean, we can just as well pour precast outside, especially during this time of the year until, until whenever, till the weather turns bad. Is that considered an expansion? I mean, putting up, putting up a facility outside, of course, not optimal because you have to have a lot more work to be done to read and require permit. I mean, simply putting a form on the ground and you're up and running. I mean, there's a lot of aspects to imagine to a precast building. Then you, then you've got the ready-mix facility. Well, there's ready-mix facilities all over Clay County, I'm sure. Is that considered part of an expansion of a precast facility? The ready-mix facility, yes, a ready-mix. I mean, it's just, just another ready-mix plant, just like anybody in the agricultural industry has, the postal brothers has, it's the same type of building. So when we're talking precast, there are different aspects that need to be considered here. It's the lay-down area, it's going to be a processing building, it could be even a truck maintenance shop, which is also, can also be part of it, or it's the actual manufacturer building.
Again, we're just looking at the text, changing the text and stuff like that, but that's good information too. Thank you.
I will say the ready-mix has its own interim use permit. So it's permitted separately already.
Okay. Very good.
I do have the written comments that Mr. Greer alluded to. I don't know if you would like me to read them. He pretty much stated them in his verbal comments, but he did email me his written comments as well.
If there's no new information from what he said, I would be fine just having you email us. And then we could put it as part of the record too, I would guess.
Okay, I can email it to you all.
One more comment, not come based on this text amendment, but leaning towards this new facility, once this is up and running, our current facility, its capacity, which is brought down-
Is now exiting.
Because right now, we have a lot of what we call outside labor working there, which is almost out of our culture, something new. But we had to do it, which is a big reason for this new facility. So everything will be moved to the new location and we're just going to work with our own labor, which is, that's not even half the capacity of what we're doing now. In fact, with, just using our own labor, it is already overworked. It's going to drop down to less than half. So all the truck traffic is just going to go away, most of it. We're not going to shut down by no means, but we're going to go down to the size of, back to where probably the neighbors think we should be.
And does that mean then that the traffic will be coming from the new facility down to Highway 26 then?
Then, then the traffic, we're still going to produce what we are producing, but it's going to shrink down until that's going to happen. But then all of our traffic, whatever is from the new facility.
Mr. Chairman. I, just a comment. When I first got elected, one of the comments that I heard most in the community was that there were concerns about Clay County's, just for businesses. Is it as hospitable as our North Dakota neighbor? And I think that over the course of the time being involved with planning and zoning issues, that, that constantly comes up. And I think we're, we're presented with an opportunity to allow a use that could be very beneficial for the citizens of Clay County. When we built our law enforcement center, we know how great it was to award bids if they were locally, and that wasn't the case for that. And here's an opportunity to have product made in Clay County that Clay County citizens could also use. However, if you've, if you've taken a drive to the cities lately, probably not because of COVID, there are lots of trucks headed either way, and those trucks are coming loaded from the colony. And that's great to see a product manufactured in Clay County going out to the broader spectrum. And so I am confident in the ability to tweak these applications as they come in at the planning and zoning level. And so allowing this use going forward, I think, would, would be the first step. I agree with, with Kevin on number four. I maybe would split the difference between the recommendation of Attorney Norgard and Jacobson, maybe having 1,000 feet from a residence from the building and then we could address site needs as a case by case. But I think in order to kind of make that first step, we have to approve it going forward. So I guess, I don't know if there's any new testimony, if we can close the public hearing and then go through facts of mine needs, or is that, is there any new testimony?
Tammy, do you have anything else?
No.
Emma, did you have anybody else on the phone yet?
Mr. I move to close here.
Um, no, just the people that have already talked and the two that were given the opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Move to close there.
I'll second the-
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, we're closed. Back to regular session now. Okay, heard some, I've heard a lot of documentation on, on this change of the ordinance. So any further discussion we want, or any motion?
Do we need to go through the facts of mine needs?
My understanding in, in, in reading our development call, that no, we would not need to, the Planning Commission did that already. We just need to make a motion on, on approving the text.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can, I would, I would, I would move Clay County Ordinance Number 2020-1 with some slight modifications as presented, and that would be number three, to change the setback to 1,000 feet from a residential structure. And we know what a structure means. It's not fair land, it's a facility. And then also to remove number four.
You're saying all of four, number four?
Four A and four B and then, as far as those two sections, were they?
Just all of number four?
All of number four, yeah. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant.
And I do want to comment, I think by doing this, it, it addresses, you know, our, you know, we still have the ability to review good positive economic development. And at the same time, it allows a process for our citizens to be heard on concerns that they have and how those concerns can be addressed through conditional use permits. So I, I think we cover all of the issues by everyone who commented on this process.
Okay, my question is on your motion, do away with number four. Does that include that section two and section three? Does that, section two and three stay in that page? What is four? What does four include? Let's put it that way.
Four includes the, just the, just the standards related to the agricultural general zone industry.
So it's just four A, B?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Should they be renumbered? It should be renumbered instead of section two and section three, because when you go back, you already have a section one and section two.
So it didn't make sense to me anymore.
Yep, yep.
They would be renumbered.
We'll fix that.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I suggest we take a two-minute break.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute break. We'll go to our 9:30, so we're just about on time. And then we're going to go to requests for Social Services for Nice, Truman Associates to provide integrated outpatient chemical dependency and mental health treatment services. And we got Rhonda Porter with us and Kristin? Kristin?
And then we have Aaron and Kevin on our Teams meeting today, so I'm hoping we will stay connected without any problems. But I'll just get our, our, our topic started. We have come before you in the past requesting similar requests. Nice, Truman Associates is requesting a letter from Clay County Social Services, supported by the Board, to operate a clinic here in Clay County offering chemical health services. And the rule requires the applicant to submit a letter from the county, which outlines that we support the services being offered in Clay County and we've identified a need for those services. I'm going to let Aaron and Kevin talk a little bit about their organization and what they propose to provide in Clay County. This is outpatient chemical health services and the, with a focus on serving folks that have dual diagnoses, issues, chemical health and mental health. So I will turn it over to either Aaron or Kevin, and you can introduce yourselves as well.
Aaron, would you like to start?
Well, I'm Erin Saladin. I will be the clinical partner for Nice, Truman Associates, and we, I guess, Kevin, if you want to introduce.
I wonder if we turn the volume down a little bit or something? I'm not, I'm not understanding her very well. Okay, Aaron, if you want to try it again?
I think he, I, oh, hold on, what happened?
Aaron, can you hear me?
Can, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys, is that better?
Yeah. Okay, yes, that's better. Sorry about that. If you could start again.
Okay, so I'm Erin Saladin. I'll be the clinical site director for Nice, Truman Associates at our Moherhead office that will be opening soon, will be here at the end of the month.
Okay, then, can you hear me? This is Kevin.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name's Kevin Evanson. I'm the Director for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services for Nice, Truman Associates. And basically, what we're requesting is we're, we sent a letter requesting, a letter D from the county, and we will provide outpatient SUD treatment services, substance use disorder treatment services, for individuals not only who only have a substance use disorder, but for individuals who have a dual disorder, substance use disorder and mental health issues. So the way we operate our programs is that we have substance use disorder counselors and we have mental health practitioners who participate in the treatment of these individuals. The programs are outpatient. And while we try to replicate our services in different parts of the state, so we've been very successful in working with the counties and with the private sector as well in regards to providing treatment for individuals that need dual disorder treatment. So if they have a mental health disorder as well as a substance use disorder, we work with those individuals. So basically, we try and take a holistic approach. So we work with mind, body, and spirit, so to speak. We have, we believe that substance use disorder is a disease and is biocyclosocial. We mold people towards abstinence. That's the preferred outcome of treatment for individuals with a substance use disorder. I guess I've been doing this for about 40 years. So I think I know a little bit about how to mold people into a program of recovery and hopefully they have significantly better lives moving forward if they remain abstinent and they work on mental health issues and they, we also work with a dietitian. So we try and direct a person's ability to utilize diet to try and improve their well-being. You know, we invest spirituality when individuals are with us, you know, trying to mold them towards kind of a lifestyle where they're more accepting of other individuals. Is there questions in regards to the treatment services that we would be providing for individuals with a substance use disorder? It's all outpatient services. It's all outpatient services.
So is there any other questions, or?
If there's no questions, I could add that, um, the application to provide substance use, uh, treatment to the Department of Human Services as a Medicaid provider, um, this would allow folks that are low-income, uninsured, or underinsured to also access the Consolidated Chemical Dependency Treatment Fund, which is what we administer here at the county, and allow folks to then have Nystrom and Associates as an option for their treatment services. Uh, we currently have four outpatient providers, uh, all of them are located in Moorhead. This would be the fifth outpatient provider. We do feel that the expertise with the dual diagnoses is a need for us here in Clay County. Some of our other providers do, um, provide that as well, but, uh, again, with our population and our need, we think that, uh, having this fifth provider would be appropriate. Um, so with the board's approval, uh, Kirsten and I would work to submit a letter to Nystrom and Associates that they would include with their application to the Department of Human Services, uh, for that license.
Okay. Krista, you got anything to add, or?
I do not, I think Rhonda covered it. The one thing I can say is I did talk with the, um, the chemical health staff, and they are pretty excited, um, to have Nystrom and Associates as a possible provider, as they would be able to provide services to adolescents. And currently, we do not have a provider located in Clay County that can do that.
Okay. Erin, did you have something to say?
No, I do not.
Okay. Any questions for him, or any action?
I also believe in, in the information, I did include the location of where their clinic would be, at 2405 Eighth Street South in Moorehead.
Okay.
I'll make the motion for the letter.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to allow this, uh, operation to start. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that this is an opportunity for individuals to seek treatment locally, and it is a very relevant, um, issue unfortunately, that some people are battling. So, um, I think this, this is a, a good step in seeking treatment locally, so I'll support it as well.
Any other comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Motion passes. Thank you, Rhonda.
All right. And thank you, thank you Erin and Kevin, glad this worked.
Keep it alive.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have to turn this phone off too, or?
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, Steve, we'll take, um, item number four, request approval, construction engineers change order number 30.
Uh, good morning again, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, as we're wrapping up the juvenile center project here, uh, we're, uh, construction engineers has put together, uh, I think we may see one more minor, uh, small change order, but, uh, this is a collection of a, of a number of, uh, of change order, uh, issues that we've had over the last couple of months, uh, most of all, which we've already talked about at some, uh, level here. Uh, there were a couple of different issues that came, came up as part of their inspection. Uh, the ligature restraint, smoke detectors, um, uh, came up from the Department of Corrections. Otherwise, the different items here, uh, are all different things that we've, we've spoken about at different times. Um, the total, the total change order request this morning is $73,844. Uh, this would be in addition to the, to the guaranteed maximum price, uh, and with that, I would stand for any questions.
Okay, my one comment as I'm going through this, on all this, it was very detailed on what they're adding, what they're, you know, got around four or five pages of things they did and stuff like that, all the things that they did discover before. And I was just wondering, when they originally put in the bid, was it that detailed too? All the things that they did do that was involved, or?
Well, the...
It's very, it's very much itemized now.
Sure.
I mean, were they that itemized before and everything they did?
There were two, the, the construction engineers weren't, weren't the ones that did the itemization of the actual planning, um, and so, these are, they're coming in, providing the feedback based on requests out of, out of our committee. So the architect, the architects do the original work. Construction engineers, basically, is coming up and, and providing solutions for the problems that are identified after the fact.
Any comment from the people on committee there?
I'll make the motion to approve the change order, number 30.
I'll second it. I have a comment that, I think shortly, we're gonna, I think we're pretty much done meeting as a committee now on this project, with the exception of our, the finance committee is gonna be going over the total, um, financial picture and how it looked, and we need to have that done before we have our next, uh, regional meeting, so... We'll, we'll be able to report then, uh, how we ended up sitting after all these change orders. I think it's gonna be fairly close to what we had said would, we'd be able to handle without, uh, any additional charges to member counties.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to, to change, uh, for the change order amounted to $73,844. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave and Justin, I think the first thing we've got, the approval of assembly modification for the four walk and roll packers?
Yeah, we need to, uh, like to get approval for these quick attach assembly retrofits. Um, as we've been buying our new motor graders, they come with rear-mounted rippers, and even though, uh, those are needed to lift the walk and roll packer up and down, you know, when you're, when you're traveling and don't have the machine, the wheels on the ground, you can lift them up. These retrofit assemblies are needed to kind of connect the existing walk and roll packers and the motor grader. So we've got, you, we just purchased four motor graders in March, and it's unit 141, 143, 145, and 146. So these lift assembly, uh, retrofits would be kind of like the middle link attaching the walk and roll wheels to the motor graders. We would recommend taking the money from the Internal Service Fund. Um, we, we have done this before on previous units, and Anne says they're, they're like their own unit, so the dollars wouldn't be attached to the motor grader, which has its own, uh, place in the Internal Service Fund, or the walk and roll packers, they also have their own, um, separate item. These would be an additional kind of middle piece, so, um, they would have annual, little, small annual allocations. They're about $3,000 apiece for them. Um, the three John Deeres need a spacer, and then the one, uh, Caterpillar machine doesn't need that $700 spacer, but, uh, total cost would be $11,775, and it's from the company that we buy the walk and roll packers from.
Any questions for Dave and Justin?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Chaney, second by Jim, to approve the request to, uh, for the modifications for the walk and roll packers. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Okay, with that, we'll mark, move on to approval of amended yearly gravel abstract.
Yeah, last week, we brought the gravel bids and the other yearly supply bids before the board. Uh, when we got back, we did realize there was a mistake in, uh, one of the bids that we did award, uh, townships number 13, 14, and 15 to. Uh, the contractor that bid that had his, uh, actual number to just crush the material in the column that showed that that's the, you know, crushing and hauling it for us, and it's about $4.25 difference, so he had them backwards. He had it just crushing only cost in the haul column, and his haul col, you know, his haul number was in, uh, just the crushing only. And I think it was $6.50 is what his number is to just crush it up, and if we, if we haul it, that's what he would sell it to us, and it's 10.75 is his haul number, so he's off by quite a bit. And, uh, we don't require a bidder's bond on these, uh, because I guess our feeling is, um, we've never had any major mistakes, and it does cost money for those bid bonds on these. We do have a performance bond, so once we get a contractor hired up, they are required to give us a bond that protects us then from there, but, um, we have talked with, uh, Turner Sand and Gravel, and he, he does have enough room in his schedule to absorb these other three, uh, townships, so I guess I would recommend that we, uh, award townships 13, 14, and 15 to the entire list. So essentially, it's townships one through 30 would be awarded to Turner Sand and Gravel.
So Turner was the low bidder?
Yep, he was the number.
On the others?
Correct.
Last week, you were the one that was.
Right.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve the bid that Turner Sand and Gravel will have all the county.
Correct.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
I just had a question that came out from a resident, and I had talked to Dave about this, uh, already, but the product coming out of our county pit, uh, who is responsible for crushing and making that gravel?
So, you know, the, whoever bids on our yearly gravel can bid out of whatever pit. We have some stipulations, if they do bid out of the county pit, that there's, you know, certain things they have to do. So I guess whoever, whoever chooses to bid out of there, that, that's available. So, uh, any one of us could get into the gravel business and could bid out of there. So it's, it's completely open to anyone willing to bid.
So I guess my question is, we don't have costs that have gone into crushing and preparing gravel? That's all on that?
We, we do have costs out there, but I believe that, uh, we, so, I think what I'm gonna say is, we, we pull material out of the water, and we've got certain amount of dollars per yards of overhead to pull that out and get ready. We have not used that material yet. We've been continuing to break up other rock and use other sources out there without that, but at some point, and, and I think that's in our specs as well, if someone chooses to use the rock and sand that we have took and taken out of the water and stockpiled, there's a, there's an overhead cost that has to be put in your bid as well, you know, because it's, those are real dollars, you know, that cost the county money, but...
And that, that was the question that a resident posed to me, is of course someone would use the county gravel pit, because then they don't have to go through the process of, of securing gravel pits elsewhere, and you, the county's already put the money into preparing the gravel. It seems like we need to get the raw.
Yeah, that's, it's, uh, preparing the gravel, I guess what we've done is, every so often, we need that raw material, so about every three or four years, when, when it gets low, we will, uh, put out a bid, and we'll hire, uh, basically the extraction of that material out of the water hole. And to, to date, we have not touched that yet, so, uh, if, if that, if those dollars, if that material is chosen to be used, then we have to add that overhead in, being, we have already paid for it. So it's kind of like the royalty, we add it to the bid, so it's equal to everyone else, but we don't actually get paid that. So if somebody bids $5 a yard, and they choose to use the material that's already been pulled out of the water, you need to add those costs per yards to it as well, so it's fair.
And, but then my point is, if that's after the fact, would they really be under the bid? Do you see what I'm trying to say?
I do, yeah.
I mean, I, I think you have a good process for this going forward, but...
Yep.
Um, as I mentioned last year, or last week, there's a lot of product coming out of our pit, um, and I just want to make sure that we're being treated fairly throughout that process.
Right. So, so we have not used those overhead costs to date yet, but we have in the past, and we have added that, add-in material is kind of what we call it. Once that add-in material needs to be incorporated in there, then it will be in the bid.
Any further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the letter of support to the Moorhead Great Separation for 11th Street.
Right, this is a, a project I think we're all aware of. Uh, the city of Moorhead has asked for support, uh, not only in, uh, you know, just general support from Clay County, but as well as financial report, as, uh, a portion of the roadway or the project is on county road. Um, they came to us last year, we have talked about it at our highway committee, and, uh, I think, generally, there's a lot of support for this project. I think we've got, uh, constricting issues with the, um, rail traffic, and, you know, we've got, uh, fire and police on the, on the, you know, north side of the track, so this, uh, project is very needed. The, the hard part was, uh, the level of commitment that they're looking at is a half million dollars, so it's like, where would it come from? And, uh, throughout our discussions at Highway Tracking Scheduling Committee, we decided that we would, uh, it would be eligible to come out of our state aid funds, and I think that would probably be, other than out of our general levy, it would be a little less painful. And we did put it in the current, uh, you know, it's kind of preliminary, because we haven't brought it to the board for approval, but our current five-year plan shows a half a million dollars for this project in year 2024. Uh, I did speak with the city engineer a little bit, and he felt that time scheduling, but, you know, it's probably, we, I would think even maybe earlier than we would actually be requested to pay if the project moves forward, but it would be close, so, kind of earmarking for this dollar amount, uh, if the project becomes reality.
Maybe a mistake, but didn't we approve this before, or?
I think we did.
Mr. Chair, last year, you did with their grant application, but unfortunately it was denied last year, and so they need this letter, this acknowledgement of support for their, for their, uh, new application.
But the, the $500,000 commitment we had already made. But we can, I mean, we could, like, we could certainly renew it, right, you know, but it was...
More so just the letter's important, it has to go in through the application.
Very good, okay.
I'd move that we authorize the letter.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the letter of support.
I think it was...
By Kevin.
I think Dave was on that motion.
Okay, I'll call you by your right name then. Got a motion by Kevin.
I haven't insulted Frank, so...
Second by Jim. Thanks for my correction there, okay. Anyway, we got a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Fosed. Okay. Someone's all set.
Thank you.
Guess we'll see you later for a meeting, Highway Tracking, okay? And with that, we'll go with committee reports today, we're gonna start with Grant.
Okay, well, I let you...
Okay, go ahead.
I had the pick meeting, uh, last week, we already discussed that, uh, about the, uh, back-to-business policy we worked on. And, let's see, I had, uh, uh, we had an Oakport, uh, meeting, which... Yeah, Oakport Joint Powers, which is the first time we've had a meeting, and since they became part of the city, so... Or no, maybe the second time we've had a meeting since then, but, but, uh, we had, had some business requests there for some building, and that was approved, and... And, let's see, I had, uh, a solid, uh, we had a solid waste meeting with Kirk, uh, last week to discuss a number of issues that, uh, he'll be likely bringing forward. Some of them were, uh, staffing and personnel issues. And I think that was it for me.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, uh, I attended the COVID-19, the weekly COVID-19 press conference, along with Health Director McKay, uh, and then on, later on on Wednesday afternoon, uh, I had the, uh, City of Moorhead Planning Meeting, Commission Meeting, and we approved a request for rezoning the property next to the speakeasy at 1015 30th Avenue South to change it from regional commercial to community commercial. We also approved a CUP for the City of Moorhead to excavate and construct a new dog park at 100 Riverview, River Oaks Point South. That's the far point of Riverview, River Oaks, that is. Uh, and then we approved a conditional use permit for the City of Moorhead for the Blue Goose Shared Use Trail to place a bike path and fill within the floodway overlay district just north of I-94 along the Red River. And we also approved a request by the Moorhead Public Schools for vacation of right-of-way and easements relating to the preliminary plat request, and also the preliminary plat relating to the expansion of the new Moorhead High School along the railroad tracks, south of the railroad tracks. And then on Thursday, we had a virtual meeting of the Clay County Collaborative Governance Board, Commissioner Gross and myself, uh, we discussed the 2021 budget. Commissioner Gross and myself, we discussed the 2021 budget, difficulties involved due to the tardy income from the federal government funding this collaborative. And we had to set a meeting for June fourth to hopefully receive complete income information from the source of funding for it. And so, that concludes my report.
Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I had a meeting with Commissioner Campbell in terms of we'd have been appointed to a committee to discuss any watershed appointments upcoming. We also talked about, I had Cas Clay Food Partners last week as well. And out of that came, I had an interview with Chris Burke from Point of View to discuss different resources in the community that are already present. I had the Metro HOG Executive Committee meeting last week. We talked about the 2021, 22 draft budget and moving forward with that. There is also currently a public input opportunity for the US 1070, Highway 1075 corridor. So, I think that, did we link that to the county webpage?
We did.
We did, yep, we did see that, so thank you. And I had a meeting, AMC Environment and Natural Resources Policy Meeting with our Minnesota Egg Commissioner, also the Minnesota Department of Health in, to discuss the rapid rise of issues with pork producers in Minnesota currently. Just for the public's perspective, they, there's now over a year waiting list for a lot of local butchering shops. And the question to the commissioner was, how can we, can more people buy more or bring it, you know, do it themselves? And if every butcher shop in Minnesota doubled their capacity, it would only take care of Minnesota, one percent of Minnesota's daily issue with hogs. And so, it, there's an enormous problem, specifically in southern Minnesota. But we'll just kind of work through that. And if any issues in Clay County arise, we'll make sure that we connect them to the right people. And then yesterday, I virtually attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District meeting. They talked about their different permits going on. They awarded the contract for Phase Two of Project 79 of Whiskey Creek and authorized the signature of the EAW, authorized ditch repairs for Wilken County Ditch Three and Clay County Ditches Nine, Eleven, and Forty. They talked about an appeal with the buffer strip issue in northern Oakport Township. They're dealing with that. And then they added to the agenda to reprioritize projects. And so, with that, they are in the process of reprioritizing what projects they may or may not do. And they did remove payments for Stony Creek project that they'd already paid some residents for, but removed some yesterday for that, so more to come on that. And then they gave an HR committee report as we had talked to them a little bit about how their process will look going forward in appointing their director. We will have an advisory committee meeting, three or four of us on that advisory committee with their HR group before they recommend it to their full board on the 26th, I believe, May 26th, we're looking at. And then they did discuss the termination of the contract with Houston Engineering because they think that they would address the needs of the district better by hiring their employees themselves. That concludes my reports.
Hey, Kevin? On Wednesday, the sixth, we did have the Oakport Joint Powers meeting and we did approve a conditional use permit for an expansion of an existing business on Highway 75 North dealing with indoor storage facility. Then we did, on the seventh, we did have a solid waste meeting with Kirk and Steve and Commissioner Wayland on several issues that Commissioner Wayland talked about. One of the big concerns that we have right now is the amount of leachate that has been generated there. And leachate is extremely expensive to, we have to haul that out. And I think the numbers went from two hundred thousand, I don't know if it's cubic feet or whatever, to eight hundred thousand, you know, for a same time period from last year to this year. And so, you know, I'm assuming a lot of it is gonna be attributed to, you know, the wetfall that we had. And that would obviously, you know, should account for a lot of it, but I think we'll have to be monitoring that closely. And that's gonna have an impact to that solid waste budget. Then yesterday morning, we had a diversion executive committee meeting and a couple things to note there. You know, they're working on, you know, we're working on that contested case. And I know there's been some depositions have been done now that was important to the process. And Commissioner Wayland, you know, the contested case is scheduled for June eighth. And I learned yesterday that they may not allow in-house people there to watch. So, at this point in time, you know, what we had anticipated going there for that week, it might be something that we might have to do virtually. So, so I think for right now, they've reduced the number of rooms that are reserved. You know, I'll keep you up to date on that moving forward. But it sounds like it's gonna be limited. Who can attend that thing? I think they're, I think they're looking at just the attorneys and then the live witnesses present. At least that's the discussion to this point. That's pretty much, that's pretty much, that concludes my report.
Okay, I had a couple meetings. The one was the PIC Committee meeting, where pretty much what we already discussed this morning, improving the, coming, the stay-at-home policy order. And the other one, thing that we discussed was more the homelessness concerning in Clay County. Also, on Thursday, at the Governance Board meeting, which Jim has already reported on, you know, I did have a, you know, I know we have to do virtual meetings and stuff like that, but somehow or other, that one didn't work very good, you know. And I don't think everybody was available to express their opinion concerning the budget and stuff like that. So, I agree with some of these virtual meetings and stuff like that, but there was definitely a situation there where we needed a better contact or better virtual coordination or something like that, you know. And that's, not that that's part of the report or whatever, but it didn't, I don't think it worked out as good as I would have liked to see that meeting go. Okay, those two things we had, the other things I would just like to make everybody aware of, that next Tuesday, there's an opening then for, if you want to sign up for some of the elected positions coming up. Grant's position, Jim's position, and my position will be opened for applications starting next Tuesday. So, Steve, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting. That's been covered by both Commissioner Campbell and Wayland. On the sixth, participated in a parking committee meeting with the projects being completed. We've moved the fleet around a number of times during the construction project and we're looking for a permanent place for it to go. The decision that we've made is for our, for fleet that we all share is going to return back down by Joe's Maintenance Shop. It's actually gonna be between the north side now, in between the correctional facility and the maintenance shop. And departments that have their own vehicles are gonna be, continue to be up on the north side. A north parking lot just to the west of the law enforcement center. We had a couple different meetings last night, discussion of the use of a coroner's office with the Sheriff's Department in Cass County. Be more information coming on that in the future. On the seventh, we met with Kirk and Commissioner Wayland and Campbell and they both addressed that issue. On the seventh, we also had accounting management, we had a public health update. We talked about cost-saving opportunities, looking at those within each department. Some of the things that we talked about there were lower cost to the county of the fleet vehicles here. The spring savings from social services and public health, doing, being able to do phone visits versus going out to do those to different placements throughout the state. We also talked about savings for trainings, hotel and food, which many are now have canceled or are doing virtually, which allows our employees to stay, stay in town. We also discussed the reopening policy that was addressed earlier this morning. On the eighth, participated in FM administrators in a virtual meeting. Kind of talked about the different challenges in each of our communities, counties. And yesterday, I met with Lori and Darren. We discussed, looked at the budget review for 2020 into the future and looked at some different things. I did, we did find out yesterday that our March sales tax came in. We came in at two hundred and five thousand dollars. Last year at this time, in nineteen, our March payment was one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, we had, we actually received thirty-five thousand dollars more this past month than what we did a year prior. Again, we'll see what April brings, since we only had about a week or two weeks of the COVID issue. But I did feel that that was a positive, a positive figure versus what we were maybe anticipating. And so, just a couple other different things from our, for our public standpoint. The assessors office has begun their annual assessments. They're gonna be practicing social distancing and likely wearing masks when they come out to do your assessments. These are just precautionary from their standpoint and they hope that citizens will reciprocate in the social distancing also. Let's see, with the approval of the new policy this morning, just for notification purposes, the dental clinic and the family service center will begin taking non-emergency, non-emergency appointments. The Governor Walz has approved dental clinics to reopen and so they, that will, they will begin service later this week. I did just want to piggyback off Commissioner Mojo's comments. We did ask for comments from Buffalo Red in regards to the letter that I sent at the request on April 14th. I just want, did want to note that I did also receive a comment from Mr. Leach in relation to that. And lastly, we're just, a note tomorrow, between 11:40 and 11:55, the Minnesota National Guard is gonna be conducting a flyover over Sanford here in Moorhead. And they'll be flying from the west to the east, so that concludes my report.
Can we get rights on that?
I, maybe we should note too, the census is still going up. And I did see somewhere, and I don't know if it was a late email, that Clay County is now above the Minnesota average, correct? In responses?
We are, we're at about sixty-eight point seven percent. And we do have, I'm gonna reach out to some of our mayors. We have a couple, couple of the cities in our, in our county that probably have, could use some encouragement of our citizens to continue to get that survey. And, but yes, we are, we are, we have a very high percentage of completion, so.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I mean, appreciate the fact that so many have responded, but it is very important that they respond to that census because it has a lot to do with our funding that we receive each year. Anything else? We're adjourned.